Virginia Code 2.2-37, and only such public matters were identified and they closed it. The closed meeting was being discussed, and I moved that we close the closed meeting. We just closed the closed meeting, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So now we're back in regular session? So are you good to go, Matt? Okay, let's, Chief Jenkins, thank you, and Jack. And everybody else has got to combine the hallway for the last hour and a half. Let's go ahead with the chief's report.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
I hear you now.
I didn't hear the proper certification read, that you need to do that in public session.
We did it.
The standard certification, Matt, do you have it?
Yes, sir.
Thought we did it.
Pardon me?
It was half, like half not public. He started recording again.
What, what, keep us on, sir, what did you hear?
You need to, can you hear me, Matt?
Pretty well.
You need to read the proper certification in the open after you come out of executive session.
And everybody, either.
Hey, Matt, now you also need a roll call vote on that.
Thank you, sir. Would you want to say anything in that one?
All right, Chief Jenkins.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few highlights for the month of June, through the first part of July. Scottsdale, an ACP secretary officer, command staff, met with the principal out at Scottsdale Elementary. Mayor and I talked about that physically very well. She came to say she had secured tour of the school and actually sent us all a copy of the floor plan of the school as well with the doors. So we feel pretty good if there was an emergency call in Scottsdale, he'd respond to it. He'd be able to react appropriately. As everyone knows, July 4th went really well, as far as the law enforcement perspective goes. We responded to a number of incidents, ten related traffic stops with five situations issued. One domestic incident where ACP needed some assistance to rebound country store. Individual was taken into custody for domestic assault there. At the end of the night, we had three violent property incidents. We did have one out of the entire twenty-hour day, one fire. It happened at eleven o'clock in the food line part of the line. It was a custody issue. We didn't make any arrests, but we almost had a perfect time, almost perfect. And we did have two medical calls that fire rescue responded to. And I would also like to thank Jack, who sat in at the police department with our staff from the police department that day, and actually tracked our calls for service for.
I think it's kind of eighteen, minus the fire, minus the fire rescue, bring it up.
It went really well, and I appreciated your help, Jack. Couple of significant calls for service, on the eighteenth of June, we were asked to respond to a CNS murders story at Hitford. As many of you all probably seen, four of Mr. Skeen's vehicles been damaged up there. Vehicle come around the corner, we suspect that he was probably driving cop skated, left the highway, hit two vehicles, and then those two vehicles pushed into two other vehicles. Anyway, individual was identified, and we were able to get enough information to get warrants for reckless driving. And then Officer Wood and I responded out here at 260 Hardware Street, or past Burberry. While we were there processing this, we started putting information together, evidence together, that really led us to someone knew this house. And then they were happy to come in from the door, told us that it was the woman's son that broke the window and entered the hall. But she didn't want pursuing criminal charges, so that call was cleared. In the engagements, I did meet with Pastor Page from the Union Baptist Church on the seventeenth, him and I had lunch. He felt that things were going very well at the church. So he's now going to hopefully start attending our pastor's council meetings once a month. My next pastor council meeting is the nineteenth. And then, of course, we had the Bato Festival, and I'm not sure if everyone in council is aware, but the Batos started arriving about six twenty minutes later. Yeah, it's like, just about dark when they got in. Auxiliary officers, you can see they put in about forty-three hours of their time this past month. You can see year-to-date, so I'll start all over at next meeting. But their cost savings to the town, and it was our police department, was just about seventy-four thousand dollars. Well, since I started calculating their time with the police department. We had eight new policies added to our policy manual. Our officers completed push bumper and stinger training with ACP at the academy. I attended the full board meeting at the police academy on the seventeenth. We are awaiting our training on the Narcan deployment. But Officer Barnett did attend the training trainer online through the Virginia Associations of Chiefs Police. We've got the training kits in, we've got the Narcan in from the health department. But we're just waiting to get all of our staff at the police department where we can get the training for the fourth straight. All of our clearly DMV grant reports were submitted this year, last September. On the twenty-eighth, I met with Matt Paul from the Attorney General's Office regarding some of their law enforcement issues. And that's all we had for the conference.
Any questions for the chief?
I have two, actually.
Yes, ma'am?
Just out of curiosity, having the policy set, what is the homeless person?
How do we approach folks? Fortunately, since I've been in the. Like, you get into, like, Alamo, Bay Devil, have a homeless population. And a few of the homeless from Alamo, Schultz, though, and Bucket, time to time, do end up at the market down in Alamo. Get them to where they need to go, and.
I want to make sure we're not like a criminalizing homelessness, right?
We are not going to arrest a homeless person unless they're. But we haven't had that in town since I've been. What was your other question?
Are, and I probably have nothing to do with you, I just had your desk sitting right there. The fire department and the rescue, are they currently trained for Montana?
Yes. They are, sure. One of the calls for service I had, two months ago, the lady overdosed on heroin at the market. And thank goodness that the rescue personnel was fairly close, because they were able to administer two doses, and fortunately, she survived. I didn't think she was going to make it, but she did. I followed up with family the next day. She recovered, I believe. We've had a couple of occasions where we would have had to abuse it, if we would have had it available to us. Fortunately, we haven't lost anyone. We've got rescue gear at that time. We still have it in our crew belts, in case we need.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you so much. Thank your staff for all they do. Appreciate it. We had a chamber of commerce board meeting the other day, and two main things that came out of that was reemphasize that. And I had talked, talked to Meredith and Alex, residents co-chairing the events committee. Meredith and I talked about re-elevating the beautification committee to a full-time committee job, and she would like to take on beautification committee. And Alex will be the sole events committee person. And so that was reported to the chamber, that Alex certainly understands planning of events, and that Fourth of July and Bato are not the only two events. We can have an event once a month if he wants to. It's his baby now, and the chamber is willing to help any way we can as far as, you know, cosponsoring something, providing people to help with what you've got planned. So that was really the highlight of the chamber board meeting.
I'll be, pardon me, Mr. Henson asked me about this as well. Was the committee appointments to be in action, I mean, for next week, sort of formalize those appointments on?
If we need to do that.
It would be a thing for us.
Okay, we'll just go through it.
Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, I wanted some understanding of, well, first of all, the government service. I'm just trying to figure that out, I guess. It sounds like it's a catch-all, includes a lot of different things. So I was, and so it won't entail beautification, but it will entail maintenance. So maybe I could get with you about what's beautification, what's maintenance. And also, government service also has connection with the budget, right? Is that, is that clear?
Yes.
So budget, so it kind of covers everything, except, I mean, everything's part of the budget, I guess. So, you know, I like to get more than, and with parks and trails, you know, I move to one of your meetings, because if we have budget for that, I'd like to have budget go to the, especially for the parks. So anyway, I was just curious, what else is there in the government service besides maintenance and budget? Is there other, I mean, is it, is it the website too, and that kind of, I was talking to you about? Having mailing and all that kind of thing, so that would be, okay, okay, so it's a lot of different things. Okay, so I'll go as I go, I guess.
ARB, Mr. Bullard.
Yep, this is, I have discovered in our meeting, we had two out of order, well, one semi out of order. Two applicants joined us who had done work that was unpermitted, one assigned that I think had gone beyond its due date. And that's the flowers on the run, so we got a good, we signed for it, replaced for him. Interesting guy, cool business, wants to do nice stuff to that building. So I hope we get him back to do some other updates there. See, he has no front windows. It's like, I can't show off my flowers, I'm just encased in brick all day. So we might be, we might be talking about updating that building a little bit.
Something tiny move up like the tavern?
Yeah, with the rooming, it was, it's got the side windows, but the front, you know, anyway. But we got his sign from him, it was our matter of business, but it's good to make a connection with another business owner and property owner town. Tavern had done some unpermitted painting work on their facade last year, and we met with the manager. And she committed to finishing the work, really. It's challenging when you do an unpermitted work situation, because the work's already been done. So the ARB's question is, do we find you, do we make you undo it? And so we decided the best course of action would be is to have them, we finish the work where things are like, not fully painted across. So they'll be working on that. We also got a new painting in place for Scottsdale, new Scottsdale supply company locations. We approved updated paint colors for that business. And then what else is that?
Are we staying?
For now.
I knew the original plan was to go back over.
Yeah, for now. I don't know anything about their timeline there. And that is free main, no, warrant. We got a poor-conditioned property owner, our first year to meet with us. Building was unsealed, siding was falling off, faucets need, sockets need to be replaced. And so we had a nice conversation with them about starting remediation on that property, so that was all good. We have also, in August, our notices for poor-conditioned properties will be up. So you have ninety days to meet with us. And so in August, we're going to take a look at where we want to enforce our ordinance related to poor-conditioned properties. We have two that are now in a different legal situation, which I think will impact our thinking on this a little bit. But we're going to sit down and think about where we want to emphasize enforcement for improving poor-conditioned properties in August. So more information for you then, for our August work session. And then the board did decide to move forward the nomination of Josh Peck to fill out our roster of ARB members. So we'll get him on the agenda for next Monday, for you all to vote on that. And that's all from me.
Any questions?
Got a question, Zach, from what's the status of the dress store mural?
It was approved, so approved by the ARB, there it is.
So that's the end of it. First, I think it doesn't fit the current town.
Chair?
The dress shop submitted a.
Dress?
Yeah.
And then, like, one store, like, all those fish shops, they're ice cream shop, like, obstacle out there. You know, goes on and on and on, so it's just feeling, you know, set the precedent. But it's been approved, and that's just not, it's been approved.
Yeah, I'll give you a little bit of our thinking on it. But I think the, because one of the issues that did come up was the difference between a mural and a sign. So could you paint a sign on your building? We didn't feel this mural fell into those type of ones. And when someone does come to us with a mural idea, we as a board don't get involved in content, or really, that's it, content, right? Same thing with signs, we don't really talk about words, we're not artists. So all we do is pick the location. So the question is, is the site a good one? It is the scope reasonable? And for that specific building, we felt it was okay, because that's something the sign about the stucco, and there are two windows, and then the empty space. And so the board felt that that specific site, the location for a mural was okay. But I think if the outdoor store did want to paint a fish on their building, they go through the same. They go through, they go through the same thing. I don't know, it looks like a fish. Maybe not, but, but they go through the same process. And so that's, that's how it works on that.
It's just my thinking was, you know, maintaining the character, the federal architecture, and then putting, you know. Pictures that, I'm sure that, you know, look direct.
Okay, any other questions?
Well. It's a question, but it's a comment. I mentioned this to Zach, maybe Mac will, this, the whole, follow us sometime at a work session, about the sign words. I have concerns about the clutter, especially across the street with some signs of, that firm, that ferment sign. It seems like to be a permanent sign, and it's dilapidated, it's wooden sign, and I think it should be removed. And then the weed row has a couple of signs stuck in there, and those signs seem to be, I mean, they used to have sandwich signs. The only thing you can have a sandwich sign, like, the ice cream place brings it in and brings it out every day. But this weed row has a couple of things, that they don't even relate to flowers. It's all about, it's all about THC, and I just don't think that's really appropriate.
I think literally they have to have that sign, correct?
Can they have it in their windows, though?
I don't know.
I mean, it seems like they're advertising, but they're temporary signs. And some of these signs are, they're just stuck in the ground or whatever, they seem like they should have a lifespan, and then take it out instead of being there, you know, twenty-four hours a day.
That's, that's a good point. I'll follow up with them, talk about both of those. You may well be right about temporary signs that need to act that type of ways.
Right.
And so moving that once a week, for example, put it inside, or taking them at night?
No, right, that's the plan, that's what it says in the ordinance, yeah.
Like, things like our sandwich store on the street, those happened in the opening, those things.
That's our post, that's it, okay.
Planning Commission.
Going to defer to Matt to do the report.
I didn't stay for the whole meeting, so Matt can get.
Planning Commission did not have any new applications. They spent a good deal of time on the planning development draft workings, and talked about feeling pretty good about the technical content of that work, but wanting some more community input on the goals of it, to make sure that if a complex development proposal came in, it needed that kind of some flexibility. That planning commission was working with the right criteria to know that it matched the community group. So they didn't, they didn't feel like they had enough prior information on both of them then, and wanted to do a little bit more general focus report on that. I think that's something that staff and support, maybe with a little bit of third-party help. So we're looking at the past data that we've got, the lists of active citizens that we know, who'd be excited to be involved in those, and what kind of facilitation we have to be able to get at this school cost. Planning Commission's not continuing. That took up most of their meeting time back on the fifth. The other interesting item was the completion of the spot cycle and photography of this market. They had some debate about appropriated sidewalks and trailers on that site. And where they, where they landed was a paved path along part of the Ginger River, the front of the charcoals fields, but not interfering with the state law enforcement, defer to ARB's approval on state bank, and not disturbing the trees and the problems that were there. They also committed an easement for a walking path down the back of the site. There's sort of a, not a driveway, but a cut-in on Irish Road, which you go up from Dollar General. It kind of suggests a whole place, so there will be a walking path that goes all the way through there, but it's shut. Passed there with order, maybe on one side. It doesn't fully connect to the site, but the planning commission liked it, and that through the other Boston Cross, down to Irish Road. A little bit of cooperation in future from Dollar General, from the property owners on our side, like Skeens and one off from down. It gets me towards a little bit of an intact walking trail from downtown, all the way up to the post office, which is a long time hold.
Well, that's an interesting way of thinking about that, too, instead of thinking about getting a B dot sidewalk.
Just giving it up.
If we got business owners to cooperate and say, hey, we'd like you to have dedicated portion of your property to walking trails.
Maybe it's better if it's not a common sidewalk.
It's definitely better, it's not a side of the.
Planning is fair, frankly.
Good question.
That thing with that security, they don't have that, that control that. They have a light plant on the courses of the day, but the other Boston tracks, they don't have any chelene plants on that one yet. So that would, the middle would be.
Okay, any questions?
Their recommendation.
I'm just worried about people from a business, down through a dark place, that's all we got. And it's an invitation.
All right.
One other, one other question, this is followed by our Airbnb discussion. Did you work in any language, or is there any discussion, the ordinance changes related to commercial to residential?
Not at the time.
Okay. Yeah.
Treasure.
Mr. Rados and I are up into new fiscal year, we're finishing up the tallying for the whole fiscal year. Plans in good shape, and setting up a new budget. The field work for our audit is scheduled for the beginning of August, so the auditorium will be here looking over the past year's books, in order to meet our financial policies, and to deliver that audit to you by December. I believe, Mr. Rados, we have a multi-financial year next week, and we can see the progress on the year-end to date. Grantor is moving on and needs this in significant capacity money. Those are, those are some ten hundred thousand dollar checks going out, and we're hard to pursue timely reimbursement almost. The cash balances you see next week are going to be a little bit lower because of that. We've got fifty thousand dollars out to engineers that we haven't been paid back for from the Department of Conservation and Recreation. Don't get that to us in another month or so, but it's good if we can cash on payments that we can cover that. Otherwise, we get into line credit conditions or talking, and hey, we're not going to be expounding, we can please pay later. And that's not a good person to be, so it's a good as the town council for maintaining steady reserves over a hundred thousand dollars. So we have fifty thousand to get reimbursement if we can, if we can. That's, that's good.
Questions for Matt?
Would this be a time to discuss the recommendations from council investment related to the budget? I have four.
Sure.
So I just have an idea to take whatever the remainder is for our events budget this year, and up to half next year's budget, turning that into a kind of a complacency bonus for the town staff, our police force, and the maintenance people here as well. I believe that I can make everything function on the events side without that part of the budget on a volunteer basis. It's just for this year, as a trial run, but I think that money can go in a different direction and be used better for our staff, our police. Just an idea, I'm most curious what you guys thought.
Would you like to have that on the agenda as a formal item to vote on next week? Is that appropriate?
Would be, sir.
Okay.
I wouldn't move that money around in the budget without.
Yeah, right.
How much money are we talking?
That's five thousand.
There's ten staff, so are the DMV people, town staff?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, they are.
They are that concept, okay, and there's eight of them?
Yeah, it would, it would.
Or seven of them, how many are there?
It wouldn't be five thousand dollars to be able to stack.
So there's, so there's seven of them, how many town, how many DMV people?
I guess I asked for the discretion, if you wanted to explore, we should, and myself, if you were looking.
That was my original idea, but I honestly wanted to, if we're using that money to.
Just, whatever you want to make your motion, and what it's going to cover, just let Matt know what that's going to entail, and then we'll.
Full-time staff plus our part-time police sheet, would be eight people at four thousand dollars.
Okay, and this is for the last year or for this year's budget?
It's, it's answered, he said.
Yes, sir, well, she is here. Yeah, got it.
I didn't catch it, who's it?
Whatever's left from the seal project, a portion of this coming year's budget. I think I can have the events on a voluntary basis rather than higher than we've been doing since.
Okay.
But again, I think it's worth trying out right here.
I appreciate the suggestion very much. I have heard from staff, especially those that want to connect, that the gas prices pinch, their rents are falling, and our costs are going to increase in some cases. And it might be, you know, hopeful that some of these prices come down again, the gas price. And doing it as a one-time change of the winter return budget now, so I think that's a more responsible thing to give a base of.
Okay.
Thanks, Zach. Matt, there's been some things we've seen lately about municipalities receiving money towards COVID relief, and I believe we were part of that. Are we okay, as all of those galaxies, that we spent COVID money for COVID and had an infection also? It was like, it's people before, right?
Good question. We did get a audit for the first half of tariffs money, that was a hundred thousand dollars, that went towards emergency operations, part of our, for the years of support, that's all. So that would, would affect audit. The American Rescue Plan money for small local capitals is very generous as far as paperwork compliance, and it's very efficient in action. So I think the federal charging certification that we used into it. So I think the federal charging certification that we used to address pandemic impacts. And to deal with the economic disruption perspective, which all we have to say, we really do not have to give a line item list of everything that's back on. Bigger cities do and have run into hiring extra financial consultants. They may have much more specific rules than what we do and some of them have been suspended on the roadmap. The feds are much more permissive with small local governments. By small, they mean getting less than ten million dollars per month. We only get a quarter. So we're fine. I think the certification, I think our second check from our public will be appreciated as soon as it clears the government's office. It goes to the state first when it makes sense with us. So we're in good standing. Larger cities are going to have a real financial headache and do it with supplies. And I really appreciate that the feds and the group is going to create some more flexibility for small tax debt. Or else we would be spending a fair portion of our, or part of money to our other to make sure that it's back. Giving money to a financial consultant, to dollars.
Thanks a lot.
Good question. It's going to happen on my, it's a rule step change and I didn't understand it at this time.
In the same telecast, I've heard that part of a fork of a field. Speaking back on to a bigger field where a ten million dollar grant was given to study the effect of a treadmill. The fact that we have on its name. I'm like, yeah, just wanted to throw it out there.
If we have research labs in our town, so that we could pay scientists to do some of that research, imagine what.
It's kind of like those reports where they did this four-year study to find the people that don't have have very much of an income. Don't eat as well as people who do. Okay, yeah. Mayor's report will make it brief. I've met with the chief several times, including a follow-up. Meeting just to see how things went on the fourth. I have been in the office signing checks and doing some stuff around here over the last couple of weeks. During the fourth, I and and I hope the fireworks continue to be fired from the south side of the river. Cause that was really impressive. You could see them everywhere. But I I left a little early, but I got home, I could look through the trees and still see them from my house. That was really, really a great place to have them. Thank is Mr. Miner who let him use his property. So yeah, we thank Mr. Miner. We thank the fire department for everything they did and everybody else, the volunteers and all the volunteer police officers we had in town. It was just a really good day and the weather actually cooperated. So that was, that was great. Matt and I met with Mr. Heisen last week just to kind of fill him in on what the chairman of the government services committee does. And. He can, I don't know if he set a schedule for his his meetings or not, but that we told him, made it clear that that was. Said it when it worked best for him. And of course, we, he can always use volunteers on government services. That's pretty much everything I told about Chamber of Commerce, the planning commission. So any questions? And if not, Mr. Bowling, you have anything for us at this struggle?
I have a couple of matters, Mr. Mayor. Does everybody hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Good. First, ARB, I spent a fair amount of time with the ARB this month. I think it's good news, but we'll have to see a little bit further in the future. There are three problem properties, long-time properties with the in the town with that the ARB has been dealing with for many years. One of those is is all of them are delinquent in their back taxes and all of them have been put on a schedule to be sold. One of them is coming up for auction in some July and the exact date escapes me. I apologize. But I was made contact with the private lawyer that does these tax sales and. He he was, said he would help us and through Matt's effort, he was able to give me a really good statement that. The tax attorney has agreed to read at auction. Most of these tax sales, so as not to mislead you too much, if the property has any real value to it, a lot of people. Property owners get in the habit of not paying taxes and then waiting until the last moment. And then they redeem the property from auction of a tax sale by paying the delinquent taxes. In this case, it's coming up in July. There's a substantial amount of money involved, so this may actually occur. Stay tuned. I'll keep you informed. If it does occur, you'll have a new owner. And given the state of things in the past, I, it can only be an improvement. There are two more that are in the stages of of being sold, but procedurally, that's going to be somewhere off in the future. I'll keep you informed. I did a couple of matters with the chief. Some old, but the principal thing that interests me is was the chief sent me a really good detailed drone policy. Which is the way the world seems to be going and I helped helped a little bit with that, but most of that is is the chief's work. And finally, today I sent you a deed for the town's property in Buckingham County. Which appears to be by the plat, thirty-six point five acres, which the town acquired back in the early fifties. We'll talk about that later at one of the agenda items for tonight's meeting. That's all I have. If any older new members have any questions ever, just give me a call and I'll try to answer your questions and if I don't know the answer, I'll try to find out. That's it.
Yeah, Mr. Bowling, is it okay with you if we go into the Buckingham County issue?
No, that will be fine.
Okay, I I I know what it's about, but Matt can explain it to everybody and.
But others who've been around town longer and are more familiar. And this this item came out of government services committee. As we were talking about town budget and town property and our capital needs, we were sort of inventorying, okay, what is the town home? And are we using our assets? And as we made this, well, we own thirty-six acres in Buckingham. What's the story with that? We've cut timber on occasion on that Buckingham Timberback cycle and made some money from it. We own the land, taxes cost us very little. Oh, please, and and local history will be very welcome in this discussion because I I have not heard too much about it. We wanted to get into the history of this site, bringing up the council, especially the newer members who may not know that we own this piece of land. And have to manage or dispose of it is is a discussion that Mr. Bowman found a deed for us as well as some of the history. It's, and I think I'll leave it there. Mr. Bowman, what what are you?
Well, what I've heard from two previous mayors is it was, it's the old town dump. Whether that's true or not, I don't know, but I generally, the mayor's generally thinks team to have pretty good information. And it was used as a town dump for a number of years, much longer, Matt, than what you thought. As a result of the hurricanes in the seventies. There you are.
I I contacted the Department of Environmental Quality Office and they they track closed landfills. Like the one at I T that I'm working. This property is not on their list, but there are many old sites like that that are not, that are from. Before there was an EPA, before there was a state need to, and the state can't match to what happened there. So we we think that explains why the town has had this line ownership, has cut timber on occasionally and sold it. But it's hard for us to try to sell something that wants. We have that financial record, but going back further than twenty years, it's hard for us to contract a budget. Thank you. Twenty thousand dollars maybe, maybe, or thirty, thank you. And it would be too forward in a few more years. So Mr. Bowman's advice, I I believe serves that it would be. Difficult to sell because of the history, but it's something that we can maintain. Not pay taxes on and cut timber on every twenty years.
Think the one for D dot F L was two thousand and four with West Vaco. I'm not sure what your information is, Matt. So it has some value there. The problem with selling it is that. The, I forget the technical name for the federal act that covers old dumps without line. It's not a landfill because it doesn't have a liner. And so the problem is what exactly was dumped into this this place? So if somebody goes out there and you sell it, he's a homeowner and he sinks a well and does some excavation and finds all this stuff and then turns you in. You could find yourself looking at a lot more than you ever, as far as monetary expense than you ever got for selling it. That's the rub here.
Does it, does it make sense to like explore the site to find out what condition it's in environmentally? Wasn't back to use that.
Can do that. Do a phase two environmental study, sink wells. With thirty-six acres, you could spend some money. I mean, somewhere between fifty, fifty thousand at least, I would think. That's doing a minimum number of wells. And I'm not talking about wells where you, you know what I'm talking about. You drill, drill pipe, a hole for a pipe down in the ground and take a course in. But maybe somebody, some people around here that are familiar with this, Matt.
Well, can you sell it and part of the sales agreement be that you have no responsibility for what's found on the ground?
That's the trouble. You can pave away your federal liability. And the way the.
Texas factory where if there were a problem there, there's still a company called Michelin.
Yeah, right.
Why don't we turn it over to Dan and he can make another pork out of it?
Well, that's that's a possibility, too. Or who knows, you may need to cut a deal at some point with the with the county of Buckingham. And it's a, it's a good card and you may want to keep in your, in your pack of cards.
One of the things I I can't remember Nancy, Mr. Mayor, I don't know when we. Five, eight, not ten years ago, whenever we have talked about it before, but generally, we've. Kind of said what Mr. Bowling said there. It's not in a position where it's easy for us to turn it into an asset that we can sell. On the other hand, it does have the opportunity to. Get tree cutting, Matt. It probably makes sense to figure out when the next tree cutting could be, you know, was that two, three, eight, whatever, whatever the timing is. Cause there is a value in doing that and that is helpful to the town. It might be something to think about for future years. And I do think if for some reason there was a grant that you found somewhere out there that allowed us to look at it, that we don't have to pay for it. I think that makes sense. I mean, you're the master at finding grants, but if there was an ability to find out. At some point in the future, a way to do some research there, that's not going to cost us money because it is expensive to start doing the research.
The only other time this has been on council agenda in my tenure was in the sort of free fall financially at the beginning of pandemic. When we were shaking out the seat cushions after we missed time, we looked at the schedule for the timbering office. But maybe we could try to make some money here right now and our our forestry consultant, Bob Waring, had thought that it would be best to wait a couple of years yet. So we're probably about to now, so it's a, it's a revenue source that you can think of as a little.
We also get, it's probably good, Matt, at some point to remind council, especially if you remember some of the other sources of income that we have. Such as the towers or things that where there is a little bit of money that we get that are helpful besides taxes. The things that are unusual that are out there.
That's right. The cell phone tower at one of the high gas stocks in the industry, they they rent, and that's a long-term lease. It's fifteen hundred a lot, which is a parallel government law. It's pretty steady. So maybe we can manage these lines in different ways, but it sounds like the advice is not to attempt to sell this.
Is possible to redoubt to a lack of.
Maybe.
I was gonna, yeah, what's our liability there to, or do you sign the waiver and then there's none?
You can make the HUD club give you some insurance to cover your risk, but that may be a good possibility for doing it, too. And that necessarily wouldn't affect your timber rights. I mean, as far as your paper crop. That's a good idea.
It's it's a new location. It's on the way to Happy Bear. It's not border from, but it's right before that turn on White Rock Road down to Happy Bear.
I tell you, I, you know, I was living around here, it's like that. My first same age is a D, so. I really don't remember anybody ever talking about it being a town dump. I would think town had a trash pickup back then. There was one fellow that, you know, picked it up. Everybody went out, that's the riding club.
On the key?
Yeah, that's where everybody, I mean, my home was in the Alamo, so that was a southern Alamo dump. Called the dump. And when you saw the Alamo or anywhere else, that's where you picked the stuff. I don't remember, don't know this one at all.
It was always key.
Well, your your recollection is better than mine, obviously, because I didn't live there in in that time. And it may, you know, somebody ought to talk to Nancy Gil. And and they're also.
She's hiding in the corner.
Hey, Nancy. And I mean, there also should be some old people, older people in Scottsville.
Yes, so it was a town dump and many things went downstairs. It was a theater and now they probably had a thousand dollars worth of movie posters.
Well, I know about that.
Yeah, and you know, hindsight's fifty. It was hardwoods until town council, whenever they did the cut. And I think it was thirty thousand dollars and the town used that money to move from there to here. So this was still, I don't know, you may remember when all our meetings were held over there. Mayor Thatcher had his office where Mayor Ball has this now. And they used the money to bring us. To create the. Um, which is now for. Yeah, so that's in history, but my understanding is two to three acres of that third sum is where the town built the walls. And I happen to think it might be a good excavation for archaeologists. To allow us to see if we can like find any of those posters that they, the fire department basically emptied the theater.
I remember coming in as, let's say, a sixteen-year-old and this building was basically. Unimaginable. And back toward that way toward the front rejection area. And I remember going up there and there were, you know, maybe let's say four dozen posters. They were all rolled up. Yeah, I'm sure someone had been there before me, you know, so. It's probably what they did just here, but some of them probably got destroyed.
Yeah, that's true. That one far too big. And you wish that you had to break yourself, so it was so. That's my knowledge.
So we got twenty years now since the last time.
I think it's about that. And I think it might be a good archaeological bit to go find that.
You know, I wonder if somebody like Bob also would volunteer, just give us a look to see. We found the volunteer. No, I don't mean that. I mean the tree value.
Yeah, he did that three years ago and said.
Good seeing you, Ms. Bowlin.
All right, so we leave the Buckingham County property as it is for the moment. Is that okay to everybody? We don't need to do anything about that next week.
That's right.
Support for local nonprofit organizations. Thank you, chief. Want to tell us what this one's about?
I have the, I have a question from Mr. Heisen because he, he remembered our discussion with the Wood and Forest Act a few months ago. And was wondering about sort of a policy. Um and was wondering about sort of the the policy on those nonprofit organizations for us. And I had to say we didn't have done that case by case basis. And this is the first time we've done such a large contribution to a local nonprofit. So if I see you were talking about that, I would think that is.
Yeah, my my feeling is, well, I I I love the Boys and Girls Club. I I volunteer there all summer and the last last fall and spring teaching math and and uh reading uh an hour a day or whatever. And uh I I noticed or I found sound saw that this happened before they got this huge grant from the Kenzie Bezos, two hundred eighty-eight million dollars. And I'm thinking like, should the town be involved with philanthrop- philanthropy for for an organization like this? Because I think there's a lot of places that I've been involved, some of you probably did too. There's there's Java, there's SCAM, there's uh SOX, there's the basketball, there's the baseball here, the Girl Scouts, there's the food pantry, but we could dig into different sources, but I I don't think uh I don't think the town, first of all, I don't think the town should should be given to nonprofits when we're we're struggling with our budget often. And if we did, and for special circumstance, it shouldn't be the, just because somebody asked, but it should be specific criteria and maybe spread across the board to to a number of places in Scottsville, but I I just don't, I don't think we have the money to to start giving out money to other organizations. I mean, that's my feeling, so I I hesitate with that and I I don't want that that said with the Boys and Girls Club, but I think they're not hurting.
They uh they asked for ten thousand.
Yeah.
So now speaking with Mr. Bowling earlier today on this subject, here here's the deal. Only someone who voted for the expenditure in the budget that was passed by the council can make a motion to rescind this. So in other words, we passed it unanimously. It became part of the approved budget. And only one of those people that voted to pass the budget can try to undo this. Then they would have to bring a motion. It would have to be discussed again and then a vote taken by the same people that proved it.
Yeah.
So.
I did.
I understand what you're saying.
I'm taking a long range. It does. You don't do it this way, but not next.
I'm on the board over there and I get advisory committees, I can't be called for work. And I see the financial reports.
Yeah.
They had a lot more money than I at the fault there with that.
And so it would be Dan and Zach.
Whoever, whoever voted to approve the.
Their their votes.
Yeah, the voted to.
But that's right. We we have not cut this check yet. And I'm happy to take advantage of the time to move on here. You see this budget every month and I give the financial reports. Partly with this and not priorities change and you either wreck something, vote and tell me. And I can move that as long as it's not a wreck.
I I think we should, since we promised them something, we should give them something. Now, if y'all want to vote to make it less than five thousand dollars, that's your prerogative.
Right. I appreciate those those comments about sort of how more of the criteria piece, how do we make the decision? I think we've made a commitment here, so I'm comfortable moving forward with five thousand dollars, but I do think it would be worthwhile if the next time it's presented, I think, a policy or criteria.
I have a meeting on the twenty-first. It's twenty twenty-first and I will get all the figures, current update figures for their finances on that day. So if y'all want to wait on this till next month, I can get you those figures.
Yeah, I I I also think it's a bad look, like taking money back.
Yeah.
It's a bad look. I I we made a commitment and I I think they've earned its presentation. We all felt there was value in contributing to this community partner. So I don't feel bad about this, but I I do hear that just going forward.
Maybe this time we just let it go and then we know next time.
Next time it's, you know.
We have a policy.
We have a policy in place saying, you know, this will be considered, but we can't promise.
And they just joined the chamber of commerce.
It's a great item to start the government services committee.
It is.
One more question. How do we go about this? We didn't have an guidance office. I was trying to work on for a few months and it's the budget time. If other agencies in the community see this was successful, more of them might show up and then after they.
Didn't lie.
Right, so let's let's keep that going.
Yeah, so also with uh talking about Boys and Girls Club, Thursday, I think it's ten o'clock. Thursday morning, Senator Dees, Dees should be there for a visit. If anybody wants to go, say hi. All right, it looks like we have come down to item number five, which is none.
Oh, can I add one small one?
Well, yes, sir.
Or merit, merit, that guy is the little bastard here. Um Fourth of July follow-up. This just really piggybacked me off Matt's email. Um so I've had a wonderful day. Um but I do think um I went out and picked up trash after the parade on East Page Street a little bit. And there was like unique trash behavior this year that I've not observed before. And so I was out there picking up stuff and I was struck by the fact that there are all these like big piles of trash in different places. It's very organized. And I found that curious, because the one that's like thrown about is like here. And so what I think might be happening, because we don't have a lot of trash receptacles out there during the day, I think the people didn't want to like throw their stuff on the road, but also didn't have a place to put it. And so I I like this idea of, and we know that trash is just an issue and pick up and all that. So I would love to be a part of a last float and maybe it's the town council truck and float where we get some volunteers together and we're picking up trash at the end of the parade, getting it for, getting it for, getting it for people on the sidewalk.
Didn't we used to get the cardboard boxes with the big trash bags and set those all around?
Yeah, yeah. More bins would definitely be good, but I I think.
Or we could make the last two units in the in those little parking lot street sweepers and come down each side for.
That sounds expensive. Um but I I think it'd be a lot of fun to like walk the last float parade, say a lot of people just be picking up trash from boats off the side or off the street.
It is, but you know.
That can be an interaction with people.
Exactly. That's your action, you know.
Yeah, that's the fun part.
Yeah, so I think.
A million people you don't feel.
Yep, it's a way to interact with folks and keep the town clean.
So anybody have anything else? You have something else? Anybody have anything else?
I do have one more thing. I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
This is really something more for Zach and Matt to discuss, I think, because you guys seem to know the most what's going on, but I did cross Asha and bring it up. There is a concern, you said, yeah, that you know the background. Uh there's a concern about the holders. How it is too far and limiting the parking for people who have fishing licenses, where parking is uh included in those fishing licenses and how far the holders are coming in and parking spaces being eliminated. One, just taking them off that there's eliminated parking and two, that parking overflowing, it's really interacting, CSX and things like that. And just had we I know that we've worked with the organization over here on Valley Street, had we talked parts rec about it and.
That's a good question. Thank you for sharing it. And I I spoke with um this noble on site when it happened, but I I will again. Um I owe her another apology for having more than explained about it. The delivery came quickly and she didn't have signal at the stomach. I was glad they came on weekday. I was busy at it. It was noisy and stuff. Um she's likely to be concerned about the party. The the behavior, so I'm on my level, the trucks and trailers are into closer water section. Um the landscaping, the town council approved establishes a thirty-five foot buffer of trees for tree health and water pollution, just like what's there. Um the designers know about the turning rates for truck and trails, so they give plenty of room to move in, unload and turn around. We are taking up space to create a repairing buffer that will limit a few legal state parking places. And we'll all need to communicate with them. There's lots of other places in town that can park, sorry, the Washington State Parking Place, but there's a public legal state. I'll refer on messaging, uh here's where we can put the trailers, here's other places in town that can park the water after you are. And it can't be on CSS, it can't be on the background. But we'll use three or four spots where people use the trailer trailers or just stack their trucks right up against the water and fish off their trucks. That's not the.
So is that the final place for those?
No, they're delivered. They're going to be strung out on a line.
Oh, is there a design for that?
There is, where? Um my office, but also.
Are you gonna show, are you gonna display that somewhere so we could look at that?
Yeah.
Were you at it? Okay.
We have, we have, but it's before you were on, obviously.
Okay, so the public doesn't see.
They'll go work like parking lots and um will also be ready to stay on. It's for that. I I do have that.
Yeah. I I'm not sure. I was gonna raise something from town in this year that had something, but uh I met with uh Ron about the town council. And uh I I I wanted to see if we could develop or he could develop or have a uh a I wanted an orientation about what this, I don't know how y'all learned the job, but to have, he's gonna get a manual, I guess. And I guess there's policies and procedures, but uh I I I think it'd be good to have that. I used to do that with the the planning commission about like what the job is and what where's your resources and and I think it'd be good for me or maybe anybody to know for future, you know, if you come onto the town council, it's like, what does this mean? What is that? I know the planning commission is even more overwhelming, but to have that, and I like the fact that there are some. But one of the ones I I'm I'm curious about little local policies or maybe state policies. The one I I'm still a little confused about, maybe you could you could send that out to us about what what is the requirements for um, you know, going to meetings? Sometimes people could zoom, sometimes they could vote when they're zooming, sometimes they can't, and they have so many that they're not allowed to miss. And I think it'd be good to have uh that, you know, disseminated so we know, you know, hey, you know, and people are gonna get sick and want vacations, but you know, it'd be good to know that. I I perf- 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 uh personally like the idea in face, but I know that's not always gonna happen. But I I'd like to know that policy and any other specific policies that's different than other places for town council.
The zoom, the zoom stuff was all new that happened.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And then adjusted three or four times throughout, so there you just need to get the latest.
Yeah, I like where it is.
Yeah, I think an orientation packet is a good idea. We should have those for our committees and for.
Yeah, we really should, yeah.
That'll make sense.
What it means, yeah.
We we've got those items sort of scattered, I think pulling them together in a little binder, we're not much who are.
Yeah.
Um that's not an exception. Scottsdale, so you are.
That's yeah, exactly. See, I took that course. I don't know if there's a course for town council, but I took that course. It's really valuable, the planning commission.
Yes.
Uh you know, because you really, you meet those people, you see all the how that works and stuff like that, but you know, knowing how things work, you know, is really valuable, I think. It's like a job.
Yes, yes. So the best training access that we have comes from the Virginia Municipalities, which we pay the membership. And they, plus a year, they do a wonderful training for middle elected holders. And it moves around the state. It's most often enriched, um and it's a very modest registration fee. Um it's been a while since any council member's been to it, but I'll look that up and find out when the next one is. Um I've been presented with that actually, um and was really impressed with the local officials who showed up to learn that. Uh that'd be a great resource. We already paid a membership for it. I'll look that up. They also publish a little handbook. I have one printed copy of it, but I'll work for for a council.
Would would he have also gotten a copy of the code and everything? Or you have that as a planning listener?
Well, good.
That's a normal thing.
That's it. Is that on the website?
That's on the website, yeah. There's a.
There's other codes?
I'm trying to remember what the normal packages we've gotten, I guess.
You got that.
Wow.
Did you get the package from yesterday?
It's probably dated since.
We got a freedom, have you got the Freedom of Information book yet? Freedom of Information Act book, okay.
No, but I that's on.
Got one of those.
It's probably online.
We have some money in the line line item and the budget for training for council members and the mayor. And so if you want to go, any of you want to go to one of these training sessions, I don't know about paying your gas, but we could pay the registration fees easily. And a lot of these now are on Zoom anyhow, so you can tell about his leaving a comfort of your home. All right, anybody else got anything?
Hey, you know, this kid's asking for more homework, but technically we give her a report. Do you want to, we might write from the mayor into the Buckingham County.
I have the, I have the real prompt. Thank you. You've done so much. I have the real prompt. I saw actually. Um events, not much else. You you've seen the stack work, I'll pass the rest elsewhere. I just wanted to put on the record that I will be on vacation from Thursday until the twenty-seventh. And I want to do my very best to take that vacation as seriously as I can. Um I've got six or seven time zones on me, which I think will will help. Um but I leave me some very good ones that you check and this will go on soon. For the purpose of check signing, um the mayor and the vice mayor can do it, so please, on the shop. Um and uh I'll be running.
Which direction is the time zone?
Zero.
All right.
Good time.
Anything else? Thank you all.
Say it, boss.
Thank you, Mr. Bowing.